Okay, it is the Town of Rutland Board of Selectment meeting is the twenty eighth of December. It is six P M on the dot. Hereby call this meeting to order. At this point, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of announcement of open meeting recordings. The board is so moved.
So moved. Second, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, sever roll call vote please. Nichols. Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. First items, we have Minus Treasury Warrant Payroll. Entertain a motion to approve Treasury warrants twenty one dash W thirteen and payroll twenty one dash P W thirteen.
So moved.
Whitman, second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
White. Uh, Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Lyndon, if you could just either speak a little louder or turn your microphone up. You're a little bit muted. Thank you. Okay, uh, next we have approval of meeting minutes for December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Entertain that motion.
Motion to approve minutes. Second. Stillings.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
A question, I'm not sure if on the part about um, not, not moving to the board, uh, common vic license, any licenses that are not ready for the board to approve. If we wanted to lay out, I just, I think, I forget how the minutes were worded, but I didn't know if we wanted to be very explicit that it needed to meet um, the criteria, the building inspector, fire, um, payments, everything, that those were the criteria, not just until they were ready to be moved, kind of. I'm not sure.
Does the board want to include a detailed description of that internal process in the minutes?
That's a standard process. Why do we have to put it in, put it this way?
Yeah, I think maybe Leah, uh, I know that Ron's been working with these businesses. We can just maybe articulate clearly to them. I'm not sure it, it needs to be reflected in the minutes. I don't recall exactly the conversation, but um, it's up to the board.
I don't feel super strongly either way. I just wasn't sure how, how detailed we wanted the minutes to be, especially for this, that is kind of the pro- um, policy, but maybe not has always been followed through. So as we try to transition to some more of the kind of professional calls, if we wanted to formalize that in the minutes or not.
I know, I know there's a reason to, Mr. Chairman, but it's, it's something you can do.
All right, Leah, I just think that maybe we, um, I know Ron's been working closely with the businesses. Maybe we, we just, uh, have an internal policy sheet that we can reference or something like that. Ron, if you wanted to just draw something simple up as to your policy and procedure that we're following.
If we're talking about specifically the licenses, we have a check off sheet of all the things they have to do in order to, to get their license approved. So if you want, I can just, you know, provide a check off sheet for the board members and they can, you know, so they understand what the process is.
And now that we've had this conversation, it'll be in this minutes, so. I feel like Leah, does that address your, your concern?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Um, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
And recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Um, if it's okay with the board, I know we have some folks here from public comment, which I anticipate would be, uh, maybe perhaps a detailed conversation. Uh, we also have somebody here from C M R P C. Um, if we wanted to move, uh, that item and take that next, just to get that out of the way, um, to respect Dominique's time, I think that should be something relatively quick. If the board's amenable to it, do we have any objections to moving that?
No objections.
Okay. So we're talking about item number seventy one. It's a M O U with C M R P C for the phase one of the master plan. This is something that, if you recall, we talked about two weeks ago with, um, Norm, I think was in attendance to on behalf of the planning board, uh, to kind of detail that process a little bit. Uh, we have Ron had sent out a proposed M O U that came from Janet over at C M R P C. And just wanting to, to see where we're at with that, if we wanted to approve it, or have we had any recommended changes?
So three, Mr. Chairman. This is pretty much a standard type of agreement, as you know, uh, the planning, the three segments of the master plan we're doing are population, housing, economic development, land use. This is what we call phase one, and the funding is coming through a forty thousand dollar grant, ten thousand dollars from C M R P C, and a five thousand dollar, uh, you know, technical match from the town, which really is David's time. So there's no real cost in terms of real dollars for this agreement, but it was the C M R's P C who applied for this money on our behalf. Uh, pretty agreement. I looked at it, I don't see anything in it that, that, uh, gives me any concern whatsoever. It's pretty, just basically explains what, what they're gonna be doing for us.
Okay. Um, I do actually have a couple of proposed changes. And I wanted to see if, if Dominique, if this is something that perhaps that you think C M R P C would be amenable to ours? Um, and the board would be amenable to ours, um, obviously. Uh, so the master plan is based on N G L sections eighty one D, and it lays out very specifically the different components of that master plan. Um, I think my only concern is, and we had talked about this two weeks ago with Norm, is that that goals and policy statement, which is, I guess, subsection one of eighty one D, there's nothing in the M O U about that, and that's really the, um, the community engagement piece. I know the language, uh, is a little bit vague when it comes to that, but I, I want to make sure that we have as part of a deliverable, a goals and policy statement that we can use to build off of as a community. I think that that's something that probably was envisioned in putting this together, but it wasn't necessarily outlined specifically. Um, the only other concern that I had about the document was that I would like it personally, um, and get the board's opinion on this to follow the N G L. So the only piece of language that I think didn't was when we look to, um, I think it was housing and population, pull it up. The word population isn't used in the N G L. I think it's just housing element. So I would just like the word population removed from, from both the deliverable, uh, and the, the definition above on the first page.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Absolutely.
That is, you're completely correct. I think that, um, we can make the goals and policies, visioning statement, uh, element more, uh, more clear and explicit, and I'd be delighted to make that change. Similarly, with the population, um, population language, we can take that out too, it's no problem whatsoever. If you have any specific language you had, um, that you'd like us to include for the first provision, I'm happy to include it. Otherwise, I will work with Janet to draft something and get it back to you guys post haste.
I think my only preference would be, um, you could just pull it right out of N G L, um, in the subsection one, and just copy paste it in. And I think that, that probably does the job, and it saves everybody some time, so.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
So if that's the case, Mr. Chairman, to me, Dominique, acid you, since you have the word part of this document, if you can draft those changes for the chairman, and if the board is agreeable, they can vote with those amendments, and you can just draft those in for changes so that we can sign the document as the chairman has described.
Does the board have any opinion on, uh, any of the proposed changes, or? Uh, Jeff, go ahead.
Um, not sure if it relates to the M O U, but population, as we crest ten thousand people, doesn't that change the, uh, format of town government in different ways? Is that something that should at least be somewhat explored?
I think that's, that's outside of the scope of the M G L. I mean, that's something that in reality, realistically, to be blunt, it's Ron's job to kind of prepare for that. Um, so I really don't think that in this master plan document, that needs to be addressed specifically. Uh, again, unless, I'm gonna leave it open to the board, those are just my proposed changes, but, um, I'm just going strictly with the, the N G L deliverable, uh, that's outlined, uh, through the state.
Just back at you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, if we're looking at a five year to plan, I think it's realistic to, uh, to see that we may gain by eight hundred people. Uh, shouldn't we have some, something in place, say, when we reach this next plateau, this is what we can expect, uh, to do? And we may go to the, the town charter, or we may, you know, change from the town administrator to the town manager situation, things like that.
Although, I mean, those are big, those are big proposed changes, and again, I would push back and say that that's outside of the scope of this document. Uh, but Leah, you have your hand up too.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, I think it's important to be mindful of the population for sure. Um, looking at the M G L, there are points, um, under part two, uh, subsection two, land use. It specifically says standards of population density, um, so being mindful of kind of the population density, and it's not operating outside of, uh, we're not operating without any sort of consideration of population. Um, to Jeff's point, I fully understand, I was under the impression that the, these initial phases of the, um, master plan were more on economic development, land use, uh, housing, um, and those, those details also. So I think it's important to be mindful of it, um, and I think that the N G L does point towards population and having that as consideration without explicitly saying population.
Right. I, I just think when land use, population density and building intensity refer to specific, I guess, progressive policies, um, that you can look at as land use. Um, I think what perhaps Jeff is also talking about is you're looking at a population milestone of ten thousand, that's a little bit different of an element. Um, and again, I just would, I'm just pulling off, it's an M G L, um, that this should follow. That's my only, my only concern.
If, if I may, Mitch.
Go ahead.
I guess I would have a question, maybe, and this is maybe for Dominique and C M R P C. Are they aware of things that, significant things in a master plan that would be triggered at, that kind of crest over the ten thousand population, kind of from the small town to the ten thousand plus? Um, and working with C M R P C, I assume it's, that population piece is on all of our radars, and I assume it would be on C M R P C's radar also. So I understand Jeff's kind of concern for wanting it formalized in there, and I don't necessarily think it's, we're operating in a vacuum without that as a consideration, whether it's in there formally or not. I'm not sure.
I mean, I defer to the experts at C M R P C. I mean, if you don't think it's not necessary, then it's fine.
If, if I may, so it is absolutely, uh, you know, a significant consideration that would, uh, we would never leave out of a master plan, and it is on our radar. Um, whether it's, you know, the title of a element or not, it's, it's something that we'll be sure to include. So, um, I think we're comfortable deferring just to what's in the, you know, for the purpose of this M O U, deferring to what's in M G L, but recognizing that it will, of course, be an important consideration in all of our planning efforts, whether it's for Rutland Master Plan or another master plan.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? I don't see anybody's hand. Um, so I guess I'll go ahead and just, I'll make the, I want the board to vote on it because it's obviously not my role. So, um, I'll go ahead and make the motion to make the recommended changes, um, to be in line with eighty one D and N G L for the master plan. Um, and those changes include the removal of population, uh, as an element title, and also the inclusion of subsection one of eighty one D, which refers to a goals and policy statement, which I think is more along the lines of, of important to the process.
I'll second that.
All right. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
Clark, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
And recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Um, thank you, Dominique, for your time. Certainly appreciate you coming in, and, uh, you know, I, I know that you have a pretty great resume, so we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I'm excited to work with the town too. Have a great night, everybody.
You too.
Dominique, if you can make those adjustments to send me the new contract, I appreciate it.
I'll do it first thing tomorrow. Talk to you then.
Thank you.
So Mitch, do you need a motion for Ron to sign this with all, after all the changes or not?
I think.
Yeah, I think that Ron is the, Ron is the executing authority for it, and then it gets, the actual deliverable gets carried out by the planning board. So I don't think, uh, Ron, I think we already designated a couple of meetings ago, you as the signatory.
That's correct.
So I think we're all set.
Good, good.
So all those, uh, just to let you know, Skip, all those things where there's no requirement, uh, the select boards sign it by the state, I can sign. You guys have given the authority, unless it specifically requires the select boards all to sign the document, then I can do it for you.
Okay, sounds good. Great.
Okay. Moving on along, we'll, we'll go back into order. Thank everyone for their patience. Um, Jeff. You have your hand up, Jeff.
Yep, sorry. Um, could we accommodate, uh, Norm and Dave George from the planning board out of order?
Uh, I believe that everyone else is on here for the same thing, um, other than Norm. Uh, I think Norm might have actually just been on the master, for the master plan discussion.
Well, David and George were on for, uh, David and Norm were on for the master plan discussion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so we'll go back to, to public comment. Um, I know that there's some other town employees on for public comment as well. So, uh, we'll open it up for public comment, which is, um, going back into order for the agenda, item number four. Is there anyone here for public comment? If you are, please raise your hand and unmute, and we will recognize you there. I'm not sure if I can see the hands, but Peter can let us know as soon as he got their hand raised.
We have one hand raised from Kevin Jarvey.
All right, Mr. Jarvey, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to come on, um, and have some dialogue with the board and just a general overview. It appears as though there was some, uh, misunderstanding on my business plan over here at the milk room. Uh, I was informed by the town administrator last week that the board unanimously had the understanding that I had no intentions of moving, um, inside of this building and having an interior tap room as part of my business plan. And he also said that the fire chief had the same understanding, and that nobody seemed to know in the town that, um, my intent was to have an interior tap room. And I just wanted to come on tonight to reiterate that that was my, moving forward, I've got a pretty good battle ahead of me with, um, some things that I need to do, but I wanted to make sure that the board, the fire chief, and everybody else in town, knows that I've never meant in any way to misrepresent myself, my intentions, um, hide anything, do anything unlawful. And it appears now that I feel as though my reputation has been changed or marred because of, um, these comments, basically, that I, that I didn't, I didn't, I didn't give all the information in the beginning. And now I've, I've misled the town of Rutland, and now I'm kind of in a battle with the town. And I don't feel currently that I have got the support I thought I had recently or previously. And, um, that was really it. I just wanted to let you guys, basically, it's an apology from me to the select board, um, for misrepresenting, and I never meant for that to happen.
Okay. Mr. Stillings, you have your hand raised.
Just trying to understand the issue that the tap, the, the interior tap is, is going to be part of the milk room, and the town wasn't aware that that was gonna be part of the plan?
I think there's some confusion going on, so let's kind of just, I guess, clear this up right now. Um, I think that the board had always known, it was my impression that the interior component, uh, Mr. Jarvey, was going to be an element of your business plan. In fact, in reviewing some of the meeting minutes from prior meetings, um, for our one day liquor licenses, we had, uh, had Seth come in and update the board as to your interior progress, because I know that, um, Seth was involved with the fire safety component, um, of that building, and obviously with the occupancy. Uh, so in all meeting minutes, I know that we had approved pouring outside, obviously because of COVID, and because of that occupancy wasn't being issued. Um, it's my understanding that we knew since March that the interior was gonna be a part of the business plan. It seems to be a, an issue with, um, perhaps, uh, when the business plan had evolved, uh, maybe some different regulations being triggered in terms of code, which is not really a town or local issue when it comes to fire safety and suppression. Uh, and that is my understanding of the situation. I know that, um, you know, you had filed a complaint, I think, with the state against the town, uh, that we received, but that's, that's my understanding. If we have a different understanding of that, um, I guess we can talk about that now. I also know that town officials, including our building inspector, town administrator, and fire chief have been working pretty closely with you and meeting regularly to go over some of these issues to kind of help move the process along a little bit.
Well, I, yes and no. I mean, that's part of, part of the problem that I've come into today, and we're having another meeting tomorrow, and I'm, I'm hoping maybe something after tomorrow is different. But as of right now, I'm required to basically kind of start from the beginning, which I'm not opposed to. I'm not opposed to any of this. I want to make sure everybody understands that. I never have been opposed to anything, but a year ago, before I put the build out forward, and I went forward with my business plan and my budget, a first year in businesses is, uh, very important as to what you do throughout the course of the year. I had a whole budget in place, and now we're the last week of the year, you know, and I didn't have the plan for a fire protection engineer drawing, which is, you know, four, five thousand dollars in three to six months. So as of right now, I need to provide that before I can even start the appeal process. So I can't even get a letter of rejection from the building commissioner to, uh, start my formal appeal with the state until I have the F P, Fire Protection Engineers, they have to come in. I haven't even hired one, because I never knew I needed one until very recently. So once I do that, then in three to six months' time, they'll be able to present some drawings, and then the building commissioner told me that then he can reject those drawings, and then I can file my appeal with the state. So for me, the time's just killing me. I, I, I can't not be open to any capacity whatsoever for six months and then get a rejection and then start an appeal, and then, I mean, before you know it, it's twenty twenty two, and, um, it's just not feasible for me at this point, and, you know, and maybe to, again, tomorrow, we can talk about it, but, you know, I don't know if there's any possibility of some, um, um, time. That's all I need is time at this point to have, and I've done a little bit of research on other situations where you go to the appeals process, they under, they say, okay, you, you're gonna need to do this, but here's two years, or here's three years. And my question is, can we start the conversation to see if that's even feasible? Maybe it's not. Maybe it's something that we can't even do within the town, but maybe it's something we can talk with the fire marshal's office ahead of time, and before we go through all that, say, you know, instead of doing all this, knowing that we might just give him the time, he's willing to do this, put this fire, I mean, we all, I have a lot more information today than I did seven days ago. So I know a lot more now than I did before, and I think everybody's gonna know more now. Do we have to go through that whole process? Or can we start today, tomorrow, moving forward, knowing that I'm gonna abide by everything necessary? But in the meantime, give me a little bit of leeway so I can stay open?
Okay. I think, um, can someone please, Ron, maybe you could, the board's probably a little bit confused, uh, you know, myself included, because I know that this is an issue, um, your staff has been working with. Would you mind updating the board kind of on some of the issues?
I'd be happy to, and I ask both the fire chief and the billing, uh, official to be on this call, uh, for the, for the same purposes. First, first, I thank Mr. Jarvey for, for attending the meeting. Um, I'll say this, that my only role in this really is to, um, make sure that all the town resources are available for answering questions to Mr. Jarvey. I've had numerous phone calls with him and the billing inspector, brought the billing inspector in my office to, to discuss and try to answer any questions for him that I can. I want to make it very clear to all board members that I don't have a role in deciding if somebody gets a occupancy permit or not. Uh, I just want to make sure my staff is doing everything they can to, to have those discussion with, with people who want to do development in town, particularly businesses that would like to see expansion. I also want to state to make it very clear, I've said to Mr. Jarvey numerous times, that I absolutely love the concept of what he's doing. I think it could potentially be a tremendous asset to the town. I've had conversations with selectmen about what, how valuable this could be in terms of tourism and being an attraction to the town. That said, the big issue is building code and fire suppression. Uh, again, I'm not the expert in this, I'm gonna have to turn over to billing inspector in a minute, but my understanding of it, in my conversations with the billing inspector, uh, with the fire chief, is that you can't let somebody open a sort of an indoor, and I, to be specific with the wording, pub kind of environment where you're serving customers indoors in a wooden building without a certificate of occupancy. In order to get the certificate of occupancy, you actually have to meet the fire suppression codes, both the billing codes and supri- fire suppression codes. So as Mr. Jarvey asks, can we do something temporary, let him in? In knowing that he would do that, I'll let the billing inspector answer that question. I believe it to be no, because God forbid that during that time, there wasn't meeting fire code or the fire suppression, if there was a fire, God, you can all think about the negligence the town would be in if somebody got hurt during that time. Uh, the billing official can't, he has to follow state law, that, that he can't issue a certificate of occupancy until it meets all the billing requirements. So as much as I would love to help in that respect, uh, Mr. Jarvey, I don't believe that's possible to allow, I, I understand, you know, from his point of view, he wants to raise revenue to stay in business in order to use that revenue to pay, to meet the billing code. It just doesn't, truthfully, it just doesn't work like that, in my understanding. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to the billing inspector for any comments he might have, but that seems to be the issue. You know, uh, we'd love to help a local business, we'd love to help Mr. Jarvey, but state law just simply doesn't allow us to do that. And I'll have the billing inspector answer it, and Mr. Jarvey can comment after the billing inspector speaks, if that, that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Uh, can I be heard?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, uh, yeah, the, as far as Kevin's first, uh, comment, uh, yeah, as far as the, giving a rejection letter, I was looking at, I wouldn't give a rejection letter. I was gonna write one for both the permit applications you applied for, the reason being that there's lack of documentation for both of them. The, the deck itself, which was already built with no documents, and it's already been built with no permit. The fire alarm system, again, is inadequate, based on what I was told and what I was shown. The permit number two thirty five was followed through as merchandise, storage, and brewing. That's all fine and said, and alarm system probably could have went in that, but my discussion, when I went up there, Mr. Jarvey was asking me to stop up to see what, you know, because the deck was built, and I wanted to take a look at what the situation was. The description, uh, I was given that he, he does plan on using the tap room, but to have occupants inside tables, serving alcohol, beer, and possibly some food items. Uh, that leads it into an A two category, assembly. Uh, he wants to keep it under ninety nine occupant load. Again, an engineer would be required to really go over the analysis of this configuration, what may or may not be required, floor loads. Um, I will write a denial on it just because of lack of documentation, but this really needs an engineering analysis for this type of occupation and, and documentation in itself. And that goes to, there's some possibilities, because it, at, uh, seven eighty C M R allows, that if you're doing an A two type configuration, five thousand square feet, anything over that, there's a sprinkler. Now, it does specify fire area. Now, this is something an engineer could come into, which may be cut down the, the fire area with some firewalls. Again, an engineer would have to make these decisions, and that would exclude you from sprinkler systems. There's many ways it might be able to go around it, but I cannot tell you how to go about that. It needs to be engineered. That being said, if you could eliminate the sprinkler system, all you need to do is put an alarm. all you need to do is put an alarm system throughout the whole, just the entire building and you're all said and done. And it's just getting the deck inspected.
If I can if I can jump in and thank you for that explanation. You know, it's not often we we deal with the nitty gritty. I know Kevin wanted to have this conversation tonight. Kevin, it seems like, and again, I think the board and town staff have been very accommodating because everyone supports what you're doing. And we want business in town. It it seems like, I know that your fear, and you had articulated this to me, that you might need a sprinkler system, which is an understandable fear because that is a pretty large expense. It seems like maybe we're putting the cart before the horse in that if you have the engineer come in, there could be ways to perhaps meet that lower threshold depending on what you want to do with the interior of the building. Is that, Mr. Inspector, is that what you're you're alluding to?
Exactly.
And I and I and I fully understand that. And up until again, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Yeah, so up until just a moment ago, I wasn't even getting my rejection letter. So up until a moment ago, I mean, when I talked with the fire marshal's office, the recommendation from the fire marshal's office was that I file my appeal today. A S A P to get it going, because then what that does is that gives it gives more information. I'm gonna get the engineer. I have the full intent of doing that. And you know, one thing that, and I know over a year ago, a year ago, maybe it wasn't quite over a year ago, I had a conversation with the building commissioner at the time. And I spent twenty seven years in the building materials industry. I know a couple of things, and one is that fire suppression systems, my location off the grid, I don't have three phase, I don't have town water. It's a half a million dollars. I can put up a whole new building. I could have used my horse barn, which is three thousand square feet. I could have done all that and I asked that question, do I need sprinklers? And the answer was no. And then I started my build out. And I put a hundred thousand dollars into it and I could have put that into another facility. And I said that day to the building inspector, I would put up a whole new building if I have to put in sprinklers. So a year ago, I didn't need to, now I need to and it's a couple of things that I don't want to get back and forth on this, but there were documents put in on my deck. There was the footing documents, the layout, it wasn't what the building commissioner wanted, but he said there were no documents and no permit. And I have to disagree with that because I filed for a permit. I waited for quite a long time. Mr. Castinelli got sick, I sent some emails to Lynn. I was told that I Lynn responded to some emails that the state inspector was, she was waiting for the state inspector to approve my permit fee amount. All this was I was waiting on and then I built the deck, but there was some documentation and I'm not saying it was the right documentation, but there was some. And I need to at least give myself a little bit of credit. Because I tried to do everything, but there was nobody there to answer questions and we had that lapse. And I got jammed up and I had thirty thousand dollars worth of products sitting on the ground and I had to build and but I did put in everything I had up until that point and everything that Mr. Castinelli had asked me to do was done. And now things have changed. I'll roll with the punches. But I also have to disagree that there's no way to allow capacity because this exact same situation happened at Stone Cow Brewery the next town over. And they was given two years and he was able to operate by the by the Board of Appeals by the time he got to that. That's my whole point. So we have a case in point next town over where he was allowed to operate inside his building without fire suppression systems approved by the state of Massachusetts. So that's the path I'm going on, but it seems like it's gonna be a lot of work. And I would just ask that we verify one hundred percent that our local officials can't make that judgment call. I understand what Mr. San Angelo said. But I don't believe that to be the case because they did it over in Barry.
State state law is state law, this town doesn't have the authority to override that. These these rules that come around eight two are basically come about mostly from the nightclub fire in Rhode Island. There's a lot more strict regulations on all that.
Right.
You can't really occupy occupy that building as it is. There's still the deck issue. I do know that in my phone, August nineteenth, William Castinelli had told you that you need stamped plans for that deck before you build it. And you had agreed to to that to him in a text messaging.
All right, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go through the back and forth here. That's that's not really how I want to run this. I mean, I don't care if you want to have this conversation. It sounds like again, there's some steps that you need to follow, you know. Our priority as a board of selectmen is a town is obviously to support business, but more importantly, to protect the general public. And when it comes to fire safety and permitting, that's why these processes are in place. It's a little disappointing to hear. You know, you said you went forward and built the deck without a permit or without a closed out permit. Again, this is something where you're presumably going to have a lot of people on, just judging by the crowds that are there outside during the year. I mean, it's been very successful. I would hate to see something happen. And I think that this whole process is designed to protect people and and I think the inspector just laid, I mean, the Rhode Island fire that was devastating for a lot of families. Jeff, I see you had your hand up.
If I may, I'm recognizing this is public comment, not on the agenda. Couple of thing, I have some concerns that are jumping out at me on this. I just want to say it. If I could, first concern is that our last billing inspector told, you know, a merchant a year ago that whatever the additions are being proposed weren't necessary and he proceeded with that. And I mean, if he's if he's representing the town and he told a merchant that it wasn't needed and he with his business plan as you know, based upon that guidance in there. That's my my concern. I also was under the understanding that there was some sort of occupancy permission because myself and T A Nicholson, you know, attended the grand opening as proxy representatives of the town, etc. I was under that understanding. And then I also was under the understanding that the deck, the rapid construction of the deck was at least in part because of the COVID crisis in there, that everybody inside was being moved outside in there. So that being said, I I and then the other thing that's coming to my my head is what do, I mean, we have the same exact model in Barry. Forget the name of it, I think there's one in Westminster. What do they have? What what do they have? Wasn't the Stevens Farm a based off a farm or a barn? What what do they have in? Is that the case? Anyways, lastly, sorry, Mr. Chair, the town did vote to support agri tourism and that's what this is. At the last meeting in there and, you know, to speak for myself, I do support that business for the agri tourism and the tourism that it that it could provide in there. And I think the board feels the same way. I just would like to say, what can we do to help this guy? He's come here on public comment saying, hey, I'm gonna I'm gonna jam a year ago. I had this guidance, I proceeded. Now all of a sudden, this is being thrown at me. Granted, we had some turnover. We have a new TA and a new building inspector. But this is the first time it's come to us as town supervisors in there. What can we do to cut to the chase to help this man succeed? I mean, we we want to promote commercial business. So what, if anything, can we do as a board to to help this citizen along? So that he can get on with this. We don't want to see a business fail at the hands of bureaucracy. So can we have some solutions here presented to the board?
I I excuse me.
Thank you.
I would just suggest if he just follows along with not serving inside at the moment, stick to the outside drinking plan, keep the inside of the building away from A two. And he probably get the deck inspected properly and he'd probably be all set.
Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of comments. First, selectmen stillings, I I completely agree with you that we want to support local businesses. And that's why I've routinely had numerous discussions with Kevin and brought the billing inspector into those discussions. Because I would love to find a way to be able to help Kevin. I I I really love the concept of what he's doing. I think it could help build tourism throughout the town if we could do what he wants to do. The the problem that I have is it doesn't matter what I like or what I think, at the end of the day, you have to meet building code and fire code. And that's not optional for me. It's not optional for the billing inspector. It's the law. And I gotta tell you, I don't really like the concept of comparing what happened in another town to our town. You know, we need to follow the law and I don't know what the other town did or if they did the right thing or if they missed billing code or fire code. But quite frankly, even if it is apples to apples, you know, I don't know that comparison. So I don't like looking at what somebody else kind of did to say, should we do it? I really want to make sure that we're following the law and that we're doing it right because as the chairman was saying, the most important thing here on top of helping Mr. Jarvey is making sure the public is safe, making sure they're safe when they're on that deck. Making sure that there there's no fire hazard within that building. I've scheduled a meeting already tomorrow with again, Mr. Jarvey and the billing inspector and fire chief again tomorrow. We will work with him. I'll only give my opinion because again, I'm not a builder. That I think he needs an engineer to develop and design a plan that meets the codes. And the problem, the potential problem of that for Mr. Jarvey is that it might be too expensive to meet the requirements. And that's the downside of this. He's got to invest whatever it is, five thousand dollars or whatever to to get an engineer to draw up those plans. That's expense number one, significant amount of money. And then the result of the engineer may be, maybe he can find ways around putting in the fire suspension, maybe not, I don't know. But the fear is after he gets those engineer plans, it's gonna be too expensive to do what Mr. Jarvey would like to do. But we are doing everything we can to work with them. But but again, I'm not doing anything in in order for this board to anything that is different than what the building laws require.
Jeff, you have your hand up.
Yes, sir. Last, lastly, I mean, I'm understanding this is public comment. It's kind of taken its own runaway train here. Place that this for the next meeting. Obviously, the TA is gonna be working with him tomorrow. We get an update. Can we maybe put this on for agenda items so we can?
No, I'm gonna go ahead and say no. This really doesn't have anything to do with the board of selectmen's jurisdiction. This is a state issue. This is an issue with our employees. You know, we brought them here tonight as a courtesy to have this conversation. It puts them on the spot. In reality, you know, this is becoming a pattern. We have things that are unpermitted. We have other issues going on. I don't want to throw Seth or our building inspector under the bus by having this conversation go around and around and around. You know, Kevin wanted to come tonight and have this conversation, so we're giving him that courtesy. You know, it seems like we bent over backwards through the issuance of almost thirty one day liquor licenses and missed other things to get this to work and we're gonna continue to be supportive. But again, this is something that has to go its natural, regular course, like any other business trying to open in any other community. Jeff, go ahead.
Sir, yeah, I'm just trying to trying to get around these, you know, unregulated public comment that turn into you know, discussions. I don't want to put people on the spot or a fire chief or billing inspector on the spot. That's why I was more in favor of having some of the regulated on an agenda item so that you get the right people in there. Talk about what we need to do to problem solve instead of just kicking it around. Trying to find a solution, that's all.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments for the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I now just finish off and say, I appreciate your comments and I understand where you and the board are coming from. I up until this evening, I have to disagree with the town administrator's comments that he's been supportive. I would say he's been unsympathetic, indifferent, uncaring towards my situation up until this evening. I I didn't think I was gonna get a rejection letter. I asked him specifically if he would be able to help in any way, and he said he wouldn't even know who to call. Spoke many times in the past tense about the milk room and said, I thought this was gonna be great. Sorry for you. You just gonna have to change your business plan. So it's disheartening for me and I just want to make sure that you all know that. So far, my dealings with the new town administrator have been not anywhere near where I thought I would be in support. And hopefully, maybe the meeting will change tomorrow, but up until now, I have to disagree with his comments that he's been supportive of me. I'd say he has been the opposite.
Okay, I again, Kevin, I appreciate that and we're gonna close out public comment, but
Thank you.
You know, this, this is developing into a pattern, all right? And I I certainly appreciate your opinion there. I've been tagged on these emails, parts of these conversations. Again, our town staff, including our town administrator, our fire chief and our building inspector have bent over backwards to try and support this business and help you. You didn't pull permits. I mean, you went over trying to go around state law, which we really have nothing to do with when it comes to the fire code. I mean, this is an issue that came up too with the sixty one A issue. I mean, this is just, it's developing into a pattern and I'm not going to, as chair of this board, allow you to come in here and throw our public employees and our public safety officials under the bus like that. So I thank you for coming in. Anytime you want to have a conversation, we can have a conversation and I welcome you to public comment in the future. So thank you. So we're moving on from public comment unless there's anyone else here for public comment. Please raise your hand and Peter will let you in. So we're moving on. We have petitions, no petitions, applications, awards, presentations. We have a town administrator update. Next, we have a COVID nineteen pandemic response. Ron, would you like to update the board on that?
A couple of things. I'm not gonna, the the numbers are increasing at a pretty steady rate and I haven't gotten the recent number from from Richard. But they are still continuing to increase, not just in in Rutland, but throughout the state. We are going to be doing a vaccination for our first responders. As I said earlier on, before the meeting started, I'm gonna be meeting with the public health officials and the fire chief. Somewhere between the fourth and seventh, we're expecting to get the vaccinations around the twelfth. And we're gonna be working with, I believe it's twelve towns to provide vaccinations to first responders, as police, fire, dispatchers, that type of people. I want to compliment our public health agency, a department who's done an outstanding job that they're being recognized by the state in order to do this, to be the the district or the town that's gonna be providing these vaccinations to all these different towns. I think that's something that, you know, it seems a small thing. It's it's quite an honor for our town to be recognized in that way. Appreciate the fire chief who is using his building to allow the vaccinations to occur in the fire department. As you know, this is gonna be two rounds of shots. You have to give the first round, which will happen sometime after the twelfth and then three weeks later, I believe there's another round. It's gotta be done in order to make sure that everybody's fully vaccinated. In terms of just a couple of quick things, I think that you all recognize that there's an education round table with the school district was scheduled earlier. It's now scheduled for Thursday, the seventh. I know that the chairman of the board of selectmen and I are gonna be there and I think we're just still waiting. Not sure if anyone's heard who the representative from the finance committee is gonna be. I expect it would probably be Karen, but I haven't heard a formal response to that yet. Do I want to remind you guys that you do have to come into the building for the purposes of signing the licenses? And there's gonna be a whole slew of them after tonight that that do have to be signed. So when you guys have a chance to stop and sign them, it would be very appreciated. I I really want to thank Aaron, my new administrative assistant, your new support staff, who's done an outstanding job of literally calling every business that that needed to get their license approved, their common vehicle license approved, and really getting that done before the end of the year. And you'll see, there's a whole list of additions we're gonna make to get that done. Next year, I will say this, that we're gonna start earlier. I don't like the fact that this is happening so quick at the end of the year. So next year, we'll see to it that we get this all done. So we're not doing this last minute rush, but she's did a fine job of putting all that together. The budget process is is moving forward. All the bud, all the different departments have turned into budgets. I've created my budget book. We've still got a few more we gotta get done, mostly things like cable access and recreation revolving account items. But I'm putting together that book. I will be setting up meetings all of the week of January fourth with my department heads to go through their budgets. Like to get them done by the end of that week where I review them and then I'll be in contact with the chairman of the finance committee to start picking out dates when the finance committee will be reviewing that as well. A big part of what I still have to do is looking at the revenue side of the budget to see how our revenues have come in this year. And start thinking about what the forecast will be in terms of revenues come in for fiscal year twenty twenty two. As you know, some information just is not available yet. We haven't gotten the new state cherry street share sheet with the revenues for fiscal year twenty two and expenses. We're still looking at things like health insurance. We won't get that to the end of January. So some information is still unknown, but I'm really happy about where I'm at, where I'm at with the book and getting us ready for the budget. I think you'll find when you do get your budget books that they're more informative than you've ever had before. They're a lot more detailed, a lot more information than what you've had. So I think you'll be pleased when you see the books. Concern about the budget is the same concern. I think all of us recognize the education budget, what the impact of that's gonna be in terms of the town budget. We have big concerns of things like the cost of health insurance. They're talking about like a nine percent increase. The cost of Worcester County Retirement Plan, we're looking at a ten percent increase. Very hard to deal with those kind of numbers when you only can raise taxes by two and a proposition, two and a half. But but those numbers are things that are gonna be the big issues of this year. I think they've, they're the same issues that you get every year, but but the early look at it, it's gonna, those are the things we're gonna have to really deal with. So we're making good progress. I feel good about the timeline and we'll see how it goes. Mr. Chairman, I know you had a question.
Yep, a quick question about what you just mentioned with benefits. Just out of curiosity, do you know what our overall fringe rate is right now in terms of a percentage?
Our overall what?
Our fringe rate, benefit rates. So the combined, the healthcare, the, um.
No, I don't, I, I don't have them. As a matter of fact, um, the treasurer gave me the numbers today as to what. The perceived increases are going to be and the percentages are going to be for increases this year. But we haven't analyzed it yet, so I put those numbers into my summary spreadsheet. But we're going to have to have discussions. Again. We're using estimate numbers because the hard numbers really haven't come in yet. And when, when you start your initial budget process, you estimate those numbers are being high. Because it's easier to go down than trying to go up once you've established the budget.
And you guys usually get a pretty good indicator by the end of January, right?
It's January, that's when Maya will finally give us our indicator, right? Usually comes in right after the MMA meetings. That's usually the timing of it, but you know, that's. Three weeks away at least. So we're trying to get costs and, and liability insurance, uh, as well. So there's, those are the things that. You know, we're, we're kind of guessing high on at the moment and as we go through. The budget preparation, we'll keep updating those numbers as we get better and better numbers. Uh, department numbers are going to be more solid after next week. My department budgets will be a lot more solid because I'm going to basically lock them down. You know what I mean? We're going to say this is the overtime amount you're getting. And that's the end of the day, but those other numbers are sort of out of local control. Those numbers are going to come in when they come in and we're going to have to keep adjusting them. Um, so, you know, it's, it's the normal budget process, but I feel like we're in good shape in terms of moving that forward.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions? Jeff, I see your hands up.
A question, just want to echo the accolades for, uh, your new executive. Assistant Aaron, uh, very impressed with her.
Absolutely.
I mean, the first thing is I walk in, she recognizes me, which I'm surprised, you know, and then she had everything laid out. Uh, for signature and she'll, he assigned this in advance and, um. And you know, all the correspondence and keeping this. So, uh, you found a good one, Ron, so you get a kudo. For that one and I'd also, uh, also like to include Tamika in there. Um, she, she's doing a great job. And the, uh, the minutes are squared away and I had asked for an advanced copy of, of the minutes to, to help on the, uh.
To that, that reminds me.
Take care of that. And, uh, so nice job of both. Thank you.
Thank you. No, she's, they're doing outstanding work. I'm really impressed with her as well. But Jeff, did you just remind me of the. Uh, we need selectmen to come in. Uh, Jeff was kind enough to get a. Uh, I don't know what you call it. Jeff is a sign of recognition of Willie.
A plaque.
A plaque.
It's the same thing we did for Mike Nicholson, same format, you know?
Yeah, but we need selectmen. When you come in, make sure you sign that plaque as well. It's right at the door. I'd like to get it, you know, people to sign it. So thank you for doing that, Jeff, and it's right at the door for people to sign when they come in.
My pleasure. I enjoy doing that.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions about any of the update items? Um, Ron, I guess my only, uh, I have been getting a couple of questions during the weekend. I know that you, you had addressed those, but. Um, I think that those, those storage trailers are still behind community hall. Um, and folks have been asking about those. So I don't know if you wanted to just clear that up real quick so anyone who's paying attention.
Yeah, my quick conversation with Richard about that was. Uh, as you know, uh, one of the things that Richard required from the CARES Act was a freezer. Uh, you have to keep these vaccine, vaccines at a very low. Temperature. Uh, so we had to put in freezers into the. Bottom of the community center at the town hall, whatever the, the appropriate description for that building is. Uh, so they had to do some cleaning out of that downstairs area. I know that they put some stuff in, in those storage containers. Um, and it really deals with the COVID nineteen and being able to make room for, uh, doing the COVID nineteen stuff. And I didn't ask them, but, but they told me it was health supplies and different things. Or health things that are in those storage containers. Plus. There was a lot of other junk down there. They had to move out of the way. So that's what those containers are. And as things change, we'll, we'll kind of move this stuff back, but that was their, their reasoning.
Jeff, you had a question?
It just jumped out at me. Are the vaccines secure? Are they going to be secure if they're outside of the container?
No, the vaccines are, vaccines are in the, the basement of the community center. That's locked down. Stuff that was in the basement community say has been moved into storage. So now they're safe, they're locked down, they're in freezers, that's all set. Um, so we're very, very comfortable with that. I gotta say, the health agent's been phenomenal in terms of putting all that together. So it, it's been a real pleasure working with him. Spent a lot of time on the phone with him, talking about what's going on and, and, um. Again, we should be proud that we're going to be providing that leadership. For all the towns in terms of providing vaccines, vaccines, the first responders. That's, it's kind of a huge thing.
At some point, Mr. Chair, we should, we should recognize our, uh, health agent through this crisis. He's, he has been very, very, uh, responsive.
Yeah, I'm sure when he took the job, he didn't understand what he was stepping into in twenty twenty. So I, I think that that's a, a fair sentiment, Jeff.
Yeah, one, one other comment for the board and, and the chairman of I have been. Talking a lot about Robert's Rules of Orders and, and training. All the different board and commissions about the basics with Robert's Rules of Orders. So we put together kind of a presentation, uh, and me and the chair are going to be setting up a date and time for that soon. And of course, all the board members are invited to attend that. But it's really just the basics of Robert's rules and how, you know, what chairmen do and how motions are made and things like that. So. Expect that coming to you soon for, for a discussion.
Yeah, and the idea being that once we have that document, we can upload it to the website. Because a lot of our boards, as you know, we have some larger boards with a lot of turnover on an annual basis. And it's just helpful for folks to have that training as to how to run a meeting. Um, and be able to, to access those resources without having to search for it. Uh, Leah, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. Um, I have a question and maybe it's. I thought town, I thought town meetings especially was, uh, followed town meeting times, rules versus or town meeting times.
Talking about the, just the boards and commissions during like their everyday weekly. To specifically adopt, but just to say, you know, here's how we should run. You know, I've sitting in some meetings, not in this community, in other communities or even, you know, uh, in different, different areas of the state, but. You know, the, the inconsistency with how people make motions, how people vote. Um, there's just a lot of confusion as to how that's handled. Uh, sometimes and with the high turnover, you have a lot of people that really want to impact their community. Um, and can really use the resources that, that we have available. Um, so put that little presentation together. I think would be helpful for people if they want to, to be able to access. I mean, some boards that are smaller. Have more of an informal running and already I see, uh, Mike runs, uh, you know, a, a, a ship. In terms of, of how he's done it for a long time. But there are some other boards, I think if they're interested, it's, it's there for them to take advantage of. But no, Leah, this wouldn't impact town meeting at all.
It's more just a comment that if there was any confusion. For any public listening that attends town meeting that then think we run town meeting with town meeting. Right. Times versus now we're talking about Robert's rules. So that was just my point of. Clarification kind of for myself and for the public that is also listening, watching, whatever.
Yep. Okay. So anyone have any more questions for Ron, or you want? All right. Great job, Ron. Appreciate the update. Very thorough. Um. So new business, we have annual license renewals. Um, we have what's listed on the agenda and I think Aaron had sent out. An email, um, from stuff we had received within the last forty-eight hours that should be included that we also need to approve. To get these people approved so they're operating into the new year. Um, so we can approve them as a slate or we can approve them one by one, but I'll just read off the ones we have here. Uh, Mal's Auto Sales. Custom fabrication. Uh, Rutland House of Pizza, Senatorie Bar and Grill. Baked Bakery, Schultz Country Store and Barnside Cafe. Senatorie Bar and Grill, that's on your twice. Uh, Mr. Robertson's Neighborhood, Inc. Rutland Sportsman's Club, Pleasantale Village. Uh, Main Street Discount Liquors. And were we removing General Rufus Putnam?
That's correct.
Were there any, I know that there were additions. Let me see if I can pull it up. Do you have those in front of you, Ron?
I do.
Okay.
The additions are Mans, Inc. Modern Classic. Greg's Auto. Do you think it's still Four Corners?
Yep.
The Lula's Pizza. And the last one is Bedrock Coffers. All of these have met all the requirements now. Uh, building inspector's been out to inspect them and so has the fire department. So. Uh, that's been the whole week of, of getting our guys out there and getting these inspections done so we can get these businesses all approved by the end of the year.
Okay, and this is an update from, I know included in our meeting materials tonight. As of Monday, December twenty-third, we had some that were not in good standing. So those, those are now in good standing?
Correct. And then just if I could make a comment about General Rufus Putnam. I've had a lot of discussion with the owner of that facility and I really wanted to get that approved. Uh, she had a liquor permit in that case, uh, but the, the business is closed. And I would love to approve it. She gave me the check for the liquor permit, but she. Has not paid for the billing permit and the fire code permit to get that approved. And in order to get an approval for the liquor permit. State law requires her to have a billing inspection and the prior permit done. And she doesn't want to pay for that. Obviously, business has been closed. She hasn't had any revenue. So. Uh, I'm holding the check. I've called the ABBC, ABBCC. About seven times trying to get them to see if we could find. Some way to help this person, uh, but so far they haven't responded to my phone call. So, um. And she's going to have to make a decision soon if I can't get this done, if she wants to keep the liquor permit or not, because it's going to expire.
Jeff, I see you have your hand up.
I would just reiterate my, uh, previous request to try to. Provide relief to some of the pouring licenses that we had. The board wanted to entertain that again. That's, that's something that is within our purview that we can do. I still feel that way.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions, uh, about any of the licenses?
Uh, through the chair?
Skip, go ahead.
Uh, I do believe that, uh. We have another one that shouldn't be on there is the, uh. Barnside Cafe. I don't think they've done all the paperwork yet.
What cafe?
Barnside Cafe.
Barnside?
Yep.
Where's that?
On Maple Ave?
Schultz's?
Yeah.
Schultz's finished the work today. They finished and completed all that today. So it got accomplished as of today.
Okay, uh, because. All right.
Yep, she got the check and everything today. The inspections were all done. It was a last minute rush to get it all done.
All right. Sorry about that.
Um, does anyone have any more questions? Uh, if not, uh, more than happy to entertain the approval of these as a slate, as read. Um, so we don't have to go through all that again, if that's okay with everyone.
Motion approved as a slate?
Second, stillings.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark? Clark?
Aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
And recede, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, thank you. Um, next on the agenda, uh, we have a proclamation. Of our Cleo Blair Senior. Just as some background for this, um, as everybody knows. Uh, Cleese Senior had passed a couple of weeks ago now. Um, wasn't enough turnaround time, uh, between then and, and the last meeting. Uh, I had a lot of folks in the community reach out to me. Uh, asking if we were going to be doing something for Cleese Senior. Um, because of his longstanding service to the town and various boards and committees. Uh, some of the contributions he's made to the town buildings over the years. Uh, including, you know, some chairs of, of other boards, um, some municipal employees and just some folks around town. So for everyone that reached out to share a story. Um, or something like that to me, I really certainly appreciate it. So I had written this up, uh, for board signature. Um, having worked with the family, uh, to get it approved, to get the information right. I want to thank Anita too. Uh, the town clerk for providing kind of the service record. Uh, for Mr. Blair because he had been on some committees for. Uh, quite some time and we kind of had to dig into the history a little bit to find out, um, some of this stuff. So it's okay with the board. I'm just going to read this, um, and we'll have a vote for signature. Um, if it's, uh, appropriate. So, uh, whereas on December fourth, twenty twenty, Cleveland Blair Senior, a longtime resident of Rutland, passed from the earth surrounded by family. After decades of service to the town of Rutland. And whereas Cleveland Blair Senior served the town in various capacities, including but not limited to. Having served on the finance committee from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and twelve. Having served on an appointed sewer study committee from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-six. And having served on the following additional town committees. School, facilities, building committee in nineteen ninety-six. The Study Committee for Elderly Housing in nineteen seventy-seven. The Municipal Building Advisory Board in nineteen seventy-seven. And whereas Cleveland Blair Senior made numerous monetary and other contributions to town facilities and programs throughout his life. Including building the parish center at the Saint Patrick Church. And generously donating to town offices and endeavors. And whereas the town of Rutland wishes to recognize the life of public service led by Cleveland Blair Senior. Therefore, be it resolved that. The town of Rutland, on behalf of its citizens, is grateful to Cleveland Blair Senior for his hard work. And dedication to the town for more than half a century. And that hereby forthwith, March second, coinciding with Cleese Blair Senior's day of birth. Be recognized in the town of Rutland as Cleveland Blair Senior Day. To be marked on all future municipal calendars and observed appropriately. Presented on behalf of the select board this twentieth day of December in twenty twenty.
Make a motion to sign.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
And recede, aye. Uh, motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
And I just ask you guys, when you come in, just make sure you're signing this as well.
Great, and thank you, Aaron, for, uh. Uh, making it look, uh, pretty and putting it on, uh, that nice, um. Copy of the, uh, proclamations that we have.
We'll do.
All right. Um, I think we have one more item. Uh, we already went over the memorandum with central mass planning. Um, we have, uh, a resignation, uh, from the Board of Assessors, uh, Mr. Kevin Jarvey. So at this point, uh, entertain a motion to, um, recognize. Uh, Ron, I think there was some back and forth about the procedure for. Replacing this position that I was tagged on with the clerk's office. Uh, this is an elected position, so I think what do we just wait till the vacancy? Uh, until the election to fill that vacancy through the election itself?
I know that, that, that's completely a few, you don't, you don't, it all have to wait. Um. You know, me and Anita had a lot of conversations about this and this is a lot to do with when we did the school committee in the past and how that process should work. So there's a couple of ways. First of all, we need somebody that's interested in filling this position. Uh, and I know that the assessor has, uh, reached out to the other board members. Uh, to ask them to bring forward names. Selectmen can bring forward names, but the concept basically is that the hope is that the. Assessors bring forth a name to you guys, uh, that they would recommend for this, for this board. Uh, again, uh, the same process could occur. You guys. Uh, could select a member, uh, that is done with the remaining members of the board, the assessors board. So they would be able to come to a meeting, a joint meeting. You guys would vote to select, uh, the candidate that you believe should be on the board. Uh, we had a lot of discussions about that process because. Of what the state law says and what. Uh, our policy says, but in the end, me and Anita came. Uh, to the same conclusion that that's the reasonable process to go forward. Uh, if the. Uh, Board of Assessors don't come up with their name or don't give any recommendation. Don't want to attend a joint meeting, then the board selectmen could do it without them, but. The common process would be to include them in that, in that voting process to replace the member.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Leah, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm just looking at the Board of Assessors now and, um, with. Mr. Jarvey's resignation, that leaves two s- on the board. It was a three-member board. So, um. I'm not necessarily. I, I don't feel strongly either way that we need to fill it immediately or not, but I think that it could be beneficial. Um, to have a third member on that board, um, just given the number, you know, in even. Split versus not. So I think that that would, I'd love to have that conversation with the Board of Assessors, get their sense, um. How they feel about things and what their projection between now and the spring is looking like anyway. Because maybe it's a moot, kind of a moot point. I'm not sure.
I think the board has done a large portion because we had set the, the tax or approved a, a potential rate. Um, a lot of the work, I feel like, I know it is a lot of work to get in the Board of Assessors, but. Um, I think that some of that's already been completed, but Leah, I definitely agree with that sentiment. If, if there is somebody that's interested. I certainly think we should, it would behoove us to move on it, to make a three-member board.
Sure. Would you like us to send out? A letter to the remaining members of Board of Assessors asking them. Uh, if they have any recommendations and then me and you can work on a time for. A selectmen's meeting when you, you'd move forward with that?
Yeah, I think that's fine. An email is probably fine. Um, I know. All those folks, I think are pretty involved and pretty easy to reach. So. Um, certainly something worth, worth putting out. And I know that, um, Anita too. Uh, we post the vacancies on the website. Um, just to remind people right now, again, if you're watching. Um, we do have vacancies. So if you're looking to serve. Um, you know, please get your materials in and, and we're more than happy to, uh, to bring in.
So I would also say this, um, you know, while we're, you, your vote tonight is to be accepting resignation. There's a long discussion with Harold, the, the town assessor, the firm that. Does our town assessment work. Great compliments for the entire board, in particular, Mr. Jarvey, who's served as chairman. So it's, it's sad. It is a loss that Mr. Jarvey has decided not to continue to go forward. But every, every comment I got back, he did an exceptional job as a member and as chairman of the Board of Assessors.
Understood. We are certainly sad to see that resignation and it's a little bit surprised to see it. Um. Uh, certainly, certainly a loss as involved as Kevin is in, in town issues. Um, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation.[1790.98] Obviously, with, with thanking him for his service. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Stillings with regrets.
All right, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye, with regrets.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye, with appreciation and regrets.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. We have no correspondence. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, so moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all.
See you all next year.
Bye, guys.